The covenant made with Noah and his family. And then ngayon, paano nga ba 'yung gagawin ng Panginoon, 'yung Israel as one holy nation? Ah, a king, ah, royal king of the priest, eto 'yung plano, ang pangako ng Panginoon. Tapos, ah... 'Yung ating... Ayan. So, mula sa ating objective that we, tonight, we would like to appreciate and understand what it means to be saved from sin and to be born again as God's child. Ah, so meron tayong maaring baklasin mula sa ating main objective, and that is, one, 'yung God is revealing Himself to us and calling us to stay away from sin. Ah, remember, 400 years ang nag-stay ang mga Israelites in Egypt. And notice also na siguro kung mga Israelites ay masyadong na-absorbed dun sa culture ng mga Egyptians, what more similar, eh, iwan't rin dun sa mismong throne ng pera. Ah, so mas malaki ang hatag sa kanya to be, to live the culture of the Egyptian. And then, ah, 'yung next dito, ah... Paano 'yung to stay away from sin? God has given us the opportunity to be born again. So, may maraming symbolism's na maari tayong tingnan dito sa kakwento. Consider 'yung mga symbols na 'yun as real, real experience that we, kahit tayo, ay manarasan natin. Then we ask the question, how can we manifest that new life in our everyday journey? Ah, mamaya, mapansinin niyo na uulit itong tatanungin dito sa ating gaya question. Ah, kasi maaring sa haba ng time ng mga Israelites in Egypt, ang, ah, 'yung maraming kakwento ang nakalilimutan na nila. Maraming alisin din ang anu nila kilala, 'yung mga patriarchs. Alisin din ang nila kilala, 'yung kanila mga tinutok. Ah, tayo rin ang lumadaan sa mga ganun klaseng mga experiences na kung saan ay madalas nakakaligtahan natin ang kasalanan. So, tonight, ah, pakikinig natin, ah, again, I still encourage you to to, ah, go back to your workbook. Use the talk points para mas masunderin niyo 'yung discussion ni Kuyitsya. Alright? Here it goes.
Welcome to our next session in the Bible Timeline, the Story of Salvation. This is Egypt and the Exodus. We're beginning a brand-new book, and that is the Book of Exodus, a brand-new color. And that is going to be red, which stands for the division of the Red Sea, as Israel is going to go across on dry land. This is an exciting lesson. Let's pray. And let's ask the Lord to help us to make this personal in our own lives. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, we thank you for taking us on this wonderful adventure in your family plan, the plan of sheer goodness. Lord, as we open up this new book of Exodus, we pray that you would help us to understand your ways. As we read your words, we see your deeds. Help us, Lord, also to make it personal in our life and put it into practice, those things that we learn. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Well, today, we start a brand-new book, and that's Exodus. And this is an exciting book. In the next, as you see on the timeline chart, it's red. And a lot happens in this long period of time. The point where you open the book, when you open the book, it's important to understand that 400 years of time have already gone by. And so, there's a little bit of a gap there, but we know what happened in that gap. And that is that Israel, according to verse 5 of chapter 1, went down into Egypt from Canaan, and they numbered 70. And Jacob and all of his brothers and the family came down to Egypt because of the favor that they had due to their brother Joseph, who ended up going before them and saving the entire family. So, we pick up at the beginning of Exodus, they've been down there 400 years, and that's where the narrative continues on. During this period, we're going to find a couple of other books that are going to be important. One of them certainly is going to be Leviticus. Leviticus is going to be important, and we're also going to see how Deuteronomy is beginning to be important to this period and the next period. And we'll take a look at that. So, today, we're going to look at Charlton, not Charlton, Moses. We're going to look at Moses as he is the one that God is going to use to lead them out of bondage. This is the third period's second book, new chapter, but same story. We want to take a look at what happened to Israel as Israel spent 400 years down in Egypt. While you were doing your homework over the last week or so, they spent 400 years of hard time down in a foreign country. And while they were down in that foreign country, a lot happened in their own heart. Remember that their ancestors are Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, and who can forget Joseph, who is really the hero down in Egypt? But Israel will be down there for 400 years. That's according to Genesis, chapter 15. And we know that what goes round comes round, and what you sow is what you reap. And it was the brothers that sold Joseph into bondage, and so, they have found themselves now in bondage for these 400 years. And as I said, a lot can happen. But the most important thing to see that happened in their life is that up until this point in Genesis, we have a story that's moving along at a fairly good pace, but suddenly now, in this foreign country, they lose their story. They lost their story. The narrative really stops in terms of understanding their story. In fact, after 400 years, think about how long that is. You might even start thinking about Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob as sort of like almost myth, you know, way back there somewhere that it's kind of something that we believe, but you know, who really knows? The problem with what happened to Israel in the 400 years is that it can happen to us in our lives. And even in one generation, as we're going to see later, people lose their story. And many people who grew up in the 60s and 70s in the United States lost the narrative thread of their lives because they were in bondage, and they weren't taught the ways of the Lord. They didn't pass it on to their children. And so, here we are, Israel's in Egypt, and they are dressing like Egyptians. They are eating like Egyptians. They are worshiping like Egyptians, and you know it's coming, don't you? They're even walking like Egyptians. Okay. So, they're completely brought into that culture. And the problem that God is going to have is not getting Israel out of Egypt, but it's going to be getting Egypt out of Israel. Kind of like the worldview of America, you know? It's not so hard to separate us really from, on the outside, from America in terms of all the traps and those things that grab our attention. But what is really difficult for God, for us, at least in America, if you're watching this in Europe or Australia, the Near East, is that it's hard to get America out of our hearts. Those things that are not desirable, materialism, selfishness, overemphasis on entertainment, power, and money. Those are the things that are hard to get out of our lives. We could say, in a sense, that Israel is addicted to Egyptian idolatry. Clear back in the Old Testament, it says in Ezekiel, chapter 20, it talks about how Israel has had a difficult time looking back on being free from Egyptian gods. And we'll see that coming over and over in their life. And so, they are, in a sense, addicted to Egyptian idolatry. And God is going to take them out of that atmosphere and bring them through a pretty serious detoxification program, where they're going to learn that you don't walk by sight, and God is going to take you out and show you that you live by faith, and you can live on every word that proceeds out of the mouth of God. So, He's got a lot of work to do in their life. So, we start off in chapter 1, and one of the first things we see is that the Israelites are oppressed by the Egyptians. They're oppressed by the Egyptians, and it says in verse 8, "Now there arose a new king over Egypt who did not know Joseph." Now, obviously, he would have heard about Joseph, so that word "know" is not talking about just being aware, but it's talking about a covenant relationship, some type of legal, formal relationship that Joseph had with the former Pharaoh, the previous Pharaoh, years and years earlier. And so, what happened was is that Egypt began to see that over all of these years, Israel grew from 70 into, you name it, it's a big, big, big number, big enough to where Egypt was afraid that Israel would make some type of coalition or, you know, a deal with a foreign country, and that they would overpower Egypt. So, Egypt is sort of fearful of Israel because of the possible power that they might have. So, Egypt comes up with a plan to limit population growth. And the first thing that they decided on, verse 16, chapter 1, is that Pharaoh told the midwives to kill the boys. And it didn't work out. Didn't work. So, we come to second plan, verse 22, and that was to cast the boys into the Nile. Now, that's important to remember because, number one, Israel is God's firstborn son among all the nations. Israel is chosen not because they're fancy, or fast, have a lot of money, good-looking, all of that. They're chosen because of God's goodness, but they're chosen to be the firstborn among the nations. And who are the nations? Well, all the other nations. So, Israel's going to be an instrument to be a blessing to all of the other nations. But it's important to remember, Israel is God's firstborn. And Pharaoh is trying to drown God's firstborn son. Later, this will come back on Pharaoh, and we're going to see firstborn pay the price. What you sow is what you reap. So, they're going to cast them into the Nile, and that doesn't really end up working completely either, because one woman from the tribe of Levi had a child, and she placed that child in the Nile, but she placed him in a little basket, a little ark, if you will, and then set that basket off into the Nile. And so, Moses being placed in a basket, just as the ark of Noah prefigures salvation at baptism. So, we have this little baby in the ark. So, who ended up finding Charlton? Who found this little baby? Pharaoh's daughter, right. Pharaoh's daughter found the little baby. She knew that the baby was a Hebrew, and she brought the baby to herself, and as a result, not only baby Moses, but his mother were brought in, and he was raised for the first 40 years in Pharaoh's court. Not a bad deal. He was raised in Pharaoh's court. Now, his name is Moses, Moshe. The word "Moshe" means to draw out, and there's kind of a double meaning there. There's the idea of to draw out of the Nile. She drew him out of the Nile, so his name is Moshe. But it also is kind of a hint as to his vocation. His vocation is what? He's going to be the instrument that God uses to draw out Israel from bondage. So, he has this name, Moses. His name is Moses. Well, we move on into chapter 2, and Moses is out walking around, and he sees, by this time, he's older, obviously, he's not a toddler walking around, but he's older, and he's about 40 years old. And he sees a fellow Hebrew being mistreated by an Egyptian. So, what does he do? He kills the Egyptian. He kills the Egyptian in chapter, in chapter 2, verse 12. "He looked this way and that," he's looking around, "and seeing no one, he killed the Egyptian and hid him in the sand. When he went out the next day, behold, two Hebrews were struggling together, and he said to the man that did the wrong, 'Why do you strike your fellow?' And he answered, 'Who made you a prince and judge over us?' So, here's Moses trying to do a great job, and he's defending his kin, and they're saying, "Well, who are you to be judge over us?" Well, remember Joseph earlier? What is about to happen to Moses should ring a bell. You remember how Joseph went before his brothers into Egypt to preserve life? What they meant for evil, God meant for good in Joseph's life? Well, Moses is about to go before his brothers, before the Hebrews, out into the wilderness, the very same wilderness that they will be wandering around in for 40 years. So, his misfortune of Pharaoh finding out about the murder of a fellow Egyptian is going to propel him out into the wilderness of Midian, where he's going to spend 40 years out in that wilderness. And then, you turn to chapter 3, and the first six verses of chapter 3 introduce a new concept, a theophany. A theophany. It's a burning bush. It's a burning bush. Now, a theophany is a manifestation of God's presence, and the human reaction to a theophany is always a sense of awe. Wow, this is really something. It's fear. It's trembling. And there are, of course, many theophany's in Scripture, but the thing that I want you to see here is this. Is that he's out there in the wilderness, he sees the burning bush. What catches his attention is not just the fact that there's a burning bush, but that it's not being consumed. And so, Moses says, "I will turn aside and see this great sight, why the bush is not burnt." "When the Lord saw that he turned aside to see God, called out to him out of the bush, 'Moses, Moses!' And he said, 'Here am I.' And then he said, 'Do not come near. Put off your shoes from your feet, for the place on which you are standing is holy ground.' And he said, 'I,'" I love this, "he says to Moses, 'I am the God of your father, the God of Abraham, the God of Isaac, and the God of Jacob.' And Moses hid his face, for he was afraid to look at the ground." Now, I love that, this idea of the continuity, is that God is reminding Moses that "I am the God who has been at work with your ancestors." You might have all forgotten about Him in the last 400 years, "but I'm the same God who hears the affliction of my people, and I know your affliction. I know you." And that is the good news here, is that in the midst of bondage, God comes down and says that "I know your suffering." "I know your suffering," verse 7. "I know their suffering, and I've come down to deliver them out of the hand of the Egyptians and to bring them up out of the land to a good and broad land, a land flowing with milk and honey." Isn't that personally kind of a good thing to know? If you've ever been in bondage, you've ever been in prison in some aspect, you know, in your life, to know that God hears your cry, He knows your affliction? Well, in verse 10, he goes on and says, "Come, I will send you to Pharaoh, that you may bring forth my people." So, God comes up with this idea that He's going to use Moses, and He's going to send Moses to Pharaoh to free God's people. And Moses says to God in verse 11, "Who am I that I should go to Pharaoh and bring the sons of Israel out of Egypt?" Isn't that usually the first response we have? "Who am I? I'm not a good speaker. I'm not powerful. I don't have the money. I don't have the looks. I'm not clever. I was born in the wrong side of the town." Tracks? Whatever. But you know what I'm saying? We always have a reason why I can't be used. I'm inadequate. I'm inadequate. Who am I that I should know? In verse 12, he said, "God says, 'But I will be with you, and this shall be a sign for you.'" So, I love that response. Moses said, "Who am I?" God responds, "I'll be with you. I'll be with you." So, next time you're faced with your own inadequacies, you're faced with a situation where your immediate answer is, "Who am I?" Just remember, God is saying, "I will be with you." "Who am I? I will be with you." And that's the answer, is that I might be inadequate. I might not have what it takes according to the world, but God is with me. God is with me. And then he says, "I'm going to give you a sign. I'll give you a sign." And you know what the sign is? This is crazy. The sign is that, I'll just read it. He says, "The sign is that I have sent you, 'When you have brought forth the people out of Egypt, you shall serve God upon this mountain.'" In other words, the sign is, when it's all over with. He's not going to give him a sign beforehand. The sign will be when you're back here at this mountain, Mount Horeb. You'll know. I was with you. I was with you all along the way. Very beautiful. And then, in verse 13, Moses said to God, and I love this, because you've got to remember the place where Moses comes from. Egypt, as we know from history, worships many gods, polytheistic. They worship many, many gods. And during this 400-year period, no doubt, Israel has become familiar with many gods. Ezekiel says that they're addicted. Maimonides talks about it. Lots of sources talking about this sort of addiction to Egyptian gods. And so, Moses says to God this. He says, "Listen, if I come to the sons of Israel," and say I do go back, "and I do come to the sons of Israel and say to them, 'The God of your fathers has sent me to you, and they ask me, 'What is his name?' What shall I say to them? What is the name? What should I say to them?" And at that point, God says to Moses, "I am who I am. I am who I am." How many of you have heard that name before? "I am who I am." That's the name of God. We'll talk about that name here in just a moment. There's a lot of teaching on that name, and a lot of opinions out there, you know, in the scholarly world. But it's interesting, because in the ancient Near East, generally speaking, if a city had a temple, and you were going to worship there, the priest at that temple, or the priests at that temple, would know the name of the God in that temple. And if you knew the name of the God in that temple, then you had access to the name. You had access to the God. And that was a power, if you knew the name. And the priests had the name. It was like a secret name. And the best way to understand this is to track your own experience on the internet. How many of you have ever tried to get on eBay, Amazon, whatever, some website, and you've got to have your password? And you type in what you thought it was, doesn't work. You type in something else, your name and password, doesn't work, and you're thinking, "Oh, no." So, you keep putting some names in there. You know, is it your daughter in the year she was born? Or is it your son in the year he, you know how people do that? It's very tricky. And then, all of a sudden, you put one in, and you hit return, boom, you're in. You go, "Yes!" You want to write that down, because that name and that word was the key to you getting in there. And that was very, very exciting. Very, very exciting. Well, that's what we're talking about here, is that God gives His name. Yod, hey, vav, hey. Now, there's a lot of debate on how that might be pronounced, and people would say Yahweh. Maybe you've heard that before, but this is interesting. When God said, "I am who I am," it is a way of saying, "I was, I am, and I will be." Like it says in the New Testament, "God is the same yesterday, today, and forever. He does not change. He is. He is. You cannot contain Him. He has no inside or outside. He has no beginning or end. He is. He is yesterday. I was, I am, and I will be." And there is another way of stating that, but it's in Greek, and we find it in the Book of Revelation, where it's stated this way, "I am the Alpha and the Omega." Have you heard that before? "I am the Alpha and the Omega. I'm the beginning and the end." Well, that's in Greek, but that's an attempt to say something that is really meant to be understood in Hebrew. And that is, "I am the aleph," the beginning of the Hebrew alphabet, the aleph. And there's 22 consonants. The final one, tav, T-A-V. So, you have the aleph and the tav. And what's interesting is that the rabbis have taught, they did a little studying here, and they discovered that the very center consonant of the Hebrew alphabet is the Hebrew word mem, mem, like our am, mem. And then, if you stand back and you look at aleph, mem, and tav, you come up with the Hebrew word emet. And the word emet in Hebrew is the word truth. It's the word truth. Now, we're not going to go into it a little right now, but it's interesting that we're talking about being delivered from bondage in Egypt. And later, we're going to find out that someone's going to stand up at the end of the Bible and say, "I am the way, the truth, and the life. You shall know the truth, and the truth will set you free." The truth will set you free. So, this name, yod, hey, vav, hey, is better known, as in linguistic circles, as the tetragrammaton, the tetragrammaton, the four letters. And we'll see later that it's the unpronounceable name, and that we'll come up with the evasive synonyms, like baruch ha-shem, blessed be the name. We'll look more on that a little bit later. And so, we find out in chapter 3, in verse 13, that the request goes forward. Then Moses said to God, "If I come to the sons of Israel, what will be your name?" And we see that in verse 13. Then, in verse 18, we find out that they, it says, "And they will listen to your voice." Okay? "They will listen to your voice, and you and the elders of Israel shall go to the king of Egypt and say to him, 'The Lord, the God of the Hebrews, has met with us, and now we beg you, let us go a three-days' journey into the wilderness, that we may sacrifice to the Lord, our God.'" And this is sort of like the first attempt. You know, they're going to go and say, "Okay, give us a three-day journey out into the wilderness, that we may sacrifice to the Lord, our God." And then, it says in verse 19, "I know that the king of Egypt will not let you go unless compelled by a mighty hand." So, this is the first request. So, the request comes before Pharaoh. They want a three-day journey out into the wilderness to go sacrifice. So, he looks at it, stamps, denied. "You're not going. You're not going out on a three-day journey." Now, this challenge to Pharaoh puts into focus what the issue is between God and Pharaoh. Not only that Pharaoh had enslaved the people, which was bad enough, but that he was denying them the opportunity to worship God. That's important. Not only did he enslave them, which was bad enough, but he's denying them the right to worship God. Now, we are entering in here a battle between Pharaoh and God. And what is at stake here? What the issue is, is that Pharaoh wants them to work for him, but God wants them to be free to work for him. That's what he wants. And one of the principles is, is that Israel will come to know who she is through worship. And that's true. That's true in our lives too, is that we come to know God by worshiping God. And if we can keep people from worshiping God, then they won't know Him or their identity. Because we find our true identity in worshiping God. We find our identity in what we worship. If it's hunting, that's your identity. If it's bowling, that's your identity. If it's cooking, that's your identity. If it's sports, that's your identity. We find our identity in what we worship. We find our identity in what we worship. And Pharaoh will not let them go out and sacrifice. And we find this with young Catholic kids today, learning who they are in worship. And oftentimes, what will happen? When they grow up, they leave the church. They don't know who they are. But in many instances, they end up coming back, and that's a good thing. Well, maybe it's a good thing that Pharaoh said no. For in the long run, Israel will need more than three days in the wilderness after 400 years. After 400 years of idolatry and all this, they're gonna need more than three days. People who have big problems in life and think they can fix them in three days will find out, "I've got a lot to deal with here. I've got an awful lot to deal with here." Well, let's move on. We move on to that part in the Scripture where Pharaoh's heart is hardened. And how many of you read that? And, you know, be honest, you kinda struggle with that a little bit. You know, it's like God is saying, "I am writing this tremendous epic, and I have my people in a foreign land, and I need a villain. I need someone so I can harden their heart." And let's see, who... Pharaoh. Pharaoh, I apologize. You're the one that's gonna have to go to hell, okay? I needed a character. I'm gonna have to harden your heart. Now, I don't know if Pharaoh's in hell or not. But I do know this. God didn't harden his heart as some kind of character in the story. Ten times in the Exodus, it mentions that God hardened Pharaoh's heart, and ten times it mentions that Pharaoh hardened his own heart. But I wanted to give you just a bit from a book that Dr. Tim Gray and I wrote on The Great Adventure, on this entire epic story, this wonderful story. Twenty times in the opening chapters of Exodus, we are told of Pharaoh's hardening heart. Ten times, God hardens Pharaoh's heart. Ten times, it is Pharaoh himself. One of the Hebrew words translated hardened is kavod. Kavod, to make heavy. And a heavy heart had a particular significance for Egyptians. Among the tombs and temples in the ancient Egypt, it was common to find inscriptions depicting the final judgment of the dead as carried out by the weighing of a person's heart on a scale. Each heart was weighed against a feather, representing truth and justice. If someone's heart was heavy, that person was condemned. In the Exodus narrative, Pharaoh's heart is being weighed against the scales of truth and justice. Each time he refuses to follow God's command and acts against God and justice, his heart becomes heavier. God is making Pharaoh's heart heavy inasmuch as he gives a just command that Pharaoh refuses to follow. In the end, the heaviness of Pharaoh's heart will condemn him, not because God forced him to harden his heart, but because in his response to the demands of justice and truth, he was found wanting. And so, that's a little kind of an insight into this idea of a hardened heart. So note that Israel is God's firstborn. And the penalty in Egypt will be to forfeit their firstborn son. So the word is, "Let my people go." "Let my people go," and this is a father speaking. Now, in chapter 5, I wanna take a look at this for a moment, because it's very, very important in chapter 5. I mentioned to you earlier that there's this battle between Pharaoh saying, "I want you to work for me," but God saying, "No, I'm gonna free you so that you can sacrifice to me, or you can work for me." And that's really where the battle is here. In chapter 5, in verses 3 and 4, it says, I'll start with verse 2, "But Pharaoh said, 'Who is the Lord, that I should heed his voice and let Israel go? I do not know the Lord, and moreover, I will not let Israel go.' And then they said, 'The God of the Hebrews has met with us. Let us go, we beg, a three-days' journey into the wilderness.'" Notice that phrase, "I do not know the Lord." "I do not know the Lord." That is really an important phrase. And the Book of Exodus kind of revolves around this word, knowing. "I don't know the Lord. I do not know the Lord." So he says, "I don't know the Lord," and that is the key. And the strategy is, keep them from worshiping them. Worshiping. Keep them from finding their identity. And so, here's what happens. Pharaoh is gonna get upset because of this request. And he is gonna put a heavier burden upon Israel in the wilderness. He's gonna put a heavier burden upon them. And he's gonna say that, "I'm gonna raise your quota, I'm gonna raise your quota, and you're gonna have to gather your own straw." Now, this is actually very clever. And I think that it even has a diabolical plan behind it. And here's the plan. Israel is growing. The birth rate is growing. They're becoming strong. And Pharaoh does not want them finding their identity, so he keeps them away from worship. He doesn't want them to grow as families, so he's going to increase their load. In other words, they're gonna have to do more. So the men are out in the field, and their quota is raised. It's not just 100 bricks today, or 200 bricks today, but it might be 350. They might have to make a lot more. And so, the idea is, they may not be able to go home. And if you can't go home, then you're not gonna have more children. You're not gonna teach your children. And this is a very, very clever thing. Keep them occupied. Now, how many of you can identify with this? In America, where in job cutbacks and economy, there's this pressure on people to produce more and more to keep their job. And it's kind of funny, because this strategy of the enemy with Egypt and Israel is being used today, I believe, in our lives in modern times. You know what I mean? And that is that people are working harder and harder and harder, Monday through Friday. Ah, honey, I gotta work on Saturday. There's a quota. I've gotta be there. I know this is unusual, but I'm gonna have to spend a day at the office on Sunday. And then what happens when they come home Saturday? What comes home on Saturday or on Sunday? Is that their wife says to them, or the husband says to the wife, "Honey, where are you at? I've been talking to you. You're not listening. Where are you? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm back at the office. I've just been thinking a lot of things, you know, about work. And it still works today." And that's a problem that we have, is that we don't take a rest. And it's the rest that we're gonna discover, helps you discover who you are as God's children. But when you take that rest away, and it's just nonstop working, the enemy has you right there. You'll never know who you are. And you'll never pass this on to the next generation. And you most likely are not gonna have children. Well, so then we turn to the Ten Plagues. God is gonna give Egypt nine opportunities to repent. And this is gonna be a strategic strike on the Egyptian gods, the Egyptian economy. And some would argue that there's a natural explanation for these. And you know what? There is. There is a natural explanation for the plagues that hit Egypt, but not for the intensity and the fact that God calls them on and off. So there is some natural explanations here. We don't have time to go into in detail, but there's no explanation for the fact that God is controlling them and the intensity of these plagues, like the Nile, the first one, and darkness, the ninth. They show how he hits their reliance on other gods for life. Some theologians have recognized a corresponding relationship between the Nine Plagues and the Egyptian gods. And then the Tenth Plague and the firstborn male as a god of Pharaoh. And so, some theologians have noticed this. And this no doubt comes from Numbers, chapter 33, and verse 4. Numbers 33 and verse 4 talks about how God executed judgments on the Egyptian gods at the Passover. So right there, buried in the Scripture, is this evidence. So you have these. You have the Nile. You have the frogs. You have the lice, the flies, and so forth. But it's the Tenth Plague that really brings down the house. It's the Tenth Plague. And this is where all the firstborn males will die in Egypt. And the firstborn male of Pharaoh was considered deity. And so, here's how it goes. In chapter 12 of Genesis, we have the instructions for this Tenth and Final Plague. And Moses is told to take a lamb... Right away, we should stop. Take a lamb. We're looking for a lamb, aren't we? Remember our earlier study, Genesis 22? God will provide for himself the lamb? We're looking for a lamb. Is this the lamb? No. Take a lamb from your own house and inspect that lamb from the tenth of Nisan, the month of Nisan. Just remember the car, Nissan. From the tenth of Nisan until the fourteenth day of Nisan, and then at twilight, which according to the Hebrew calendar begins at about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, you shall sacrifice the lamb. And then you shall roast the lamb. Don't boil it. That's the way the Egyptians do it. Roast the lamb, take the blood, and put it on the doorposts of your house in the lentil. Because when the angel of death comes over or passes over, or either word "pass" over, your house will be spared because of the blood of the lamb. And then they are to prepare the bread with unleavened bread, make it unleavened, because they don't have time for it to rise. They are to gird their loins, sandals on their feet. They're ready to go. It's a meal of freedom, a wonderful meal of freedom. And so, that's exactly what happens. They prepare the lamb. They prepare the meal. And they get ready. And would you know it? The angel of death, if you will, comes over. And there is a great cry in the land. The firstborn dies. And as a result of that, there's almost this sense of, "Get out of here. Leave." And Israel leaves at that moment. They leave, and they leave with gold, the riches of the Egyptians. Their clothes don't wear out after that. And so, right after they leave, in chapter 13, after the Passover, God requires something of Israel. Their firstborn. They're gonna be consecrated. Because they were saved, they are now consecrated, the firstborn to the Lord. Later, the tribe of Levi will end up becoming the consecrated ones a little bit later on. And so, after they come out at that point from Egypt, they cross the Red Sea. They cross the Red Sea. God doesn't bring them up into the land of Canaan. And according to our study, that's the first thing, that's the first promise to Abraham that we should be looking for, right? Is the land. Land, royal kingdom, worldwide blessing. Remember that? Genesis 12, 1 through 3. You would think they would go right up into the land and possess that land, but no, God doesn't do that. He brings them south. Why? Because he noticed that they would not be ready for conflict. They would most likely go by the way of the Philistines, and they wouldn't be able to handle the conflict. So God is gonna take them a three-month journey down to Mount Sinai. And they're gonna be at Mount Sinai for one year. For one year, they're gonna be at Mount Sinai. Think of it this way. Think of it as a royal boot camp. It's gonna be a boot camp where they're going to allow God to deal with their heart, and they're gonna go through some formation so that they can be the firstborn among the nations, so that they can be an example to all the other people. And they can truly follow God with all of their heart. So they don't go up into the land. But the Lord did do something very miraculous for them. They were backed up against the Red Sea. And maybe you saw that movie with Charlton. I've been joking around about that, but maybe you remember that? Where he raises the staff, the water divides, and they go across on dry land. And then the Egyptians changed their mind. And they're gonna go after Israel. But as they go after Israel, the water collapses on them. The water collapses on them. And it's kind of funny, because some people will try to explain it away. Well, you know, at that time of the year, the water was very low, maybe about four, five, six inches. I'll say, "All right, then we got a bigger miracle. The whole Egyptian army drowned in four inches." Bigger miracle. I'm all for that. Sometimes, we just have to read the text and allow God to speak to us, rather than try to find ways to take out the wonder and the awe from the text. So the Red Sea overtook the Egyptians. And, you know, the Exodus as a whole, when we talk about the Exodus as a whole, we're talking about the plagues, the escape from Egypt, the crossing of the Red Sea, represents the single most important redemptive event in salvation history in the Old Testament. And so, the Passover lamb is something that Israel will be adopting every year. They will celebrate, they will commemorate this wonderful act of God, where he freed them from Egyptian bondage. And later on, we're going to see in the New Testament how this becomes very important to Jesus, as he is the Paschal Lamb. He is the Passover Lamb. You can read more about this in the Catechism as we see that this going through the water on dry land prefigures baptism in the Catechism in paragraphs 1094 and also paragraph 1221. 1094 and 1221. Well, one of the things that we see when we get to the New Testament is that in the Eucharist, we prepare our hearts to eat this Paschal meal with tremendous preparation, just like Israel prepared for this wonderful act of God as far as deliverance from them. So he's gonna take them out into the wilderness. And we find that out in the wilderness, he's got some things that he wants them to keep in mind. One is Deuteronomy 8:16. In Deuteronomy 8:16, it mentions that he says that he fed you, Israel, God fed you in the wilderness with manna which your fathers did not know, that he might... This is key. That he might humble you and test you. He brought you out into the wilderness, and he fed you manna which your fathers didn't know, that he might humble you and test you to do you good in the end. Now, this should ring a bell. Now this should ring a bell, we just went through the Joseph story. What looked like something was bad, was that really for your good? It was for your good, and they're going to be tested. Have you ever felt like you were in the wilderness? No one? Okay, forget that point. If you've ever felt like you're in the wilderness, know this. God has a purpose. God has a purpose. He's more interested in you learning to trust him than figuring out just the answer to your problem. He wants you to trust him. Paul wrote to the Corinthians in 2 Corinthians 2:9, "For this is why I wrote, that I might test you and know whether you are obedient in everything." And you know what they did? Once they started traveling down south, down to Mount Sinai, wherever Mount Sinai was, some people believe it's a little bit more north and east, you know what happened? They started murmuring. Aren't you glad we don't do that today? They started murmuring on the way down in the desert. After the Red Sea was opened up, they started murmuring in chapter 15, in chapter 16. In chapter 16, God feeds them in the wilderness. They get this white, like coriander seed, this fluffy white substance that covers the ground. And God is going to feed them this. And the first time it comes up, the Hebrew phrase manhu is used. What is it? Manhu, what is it? What is it? And then later, it's just shortened to man, but we call it manna. Manna. This bread from heaven that Jesus later talks about in John, chapter 6. What is it? What is it? It's interesting because they see this and they ask, what is it? But God is going to feed them this for the next 40 years. Little fast forward, kind of a treat. John, chapter 6. Big battle over the Eucharist, the bread in the wilderness, the feeding of the 5,000, people leaving Jesus. What is it? The battle was, what is it? And it was Jesus' body and his blood. But others said, oh, no, symbol, it has to be symbol, couldn't be. What is it? What is it? Manna. Now, I used to use this word, but I used it in English after I first got married with Emily. And her cooking. She had bean sprouts and all kinds of healthy things. And I'd sit down and go, manna. What is it? What is it? Because I didn't know what that was. And that's what they're asking, what is it? And they would gather enough for every day. And then before the Sabbath, they would gather enough for two days. If they gathered too much, it would rot. Once again, what's God trying to do? Teach them, you can trust me. You can trust me, I'm preparing you to be my people. Now, there's also some other things that you can do with manna. Some of you might know a little bit about my recipe book. With manna, might not sound so bad once you realize that you can make manana bread. It's true, it's true. Special days, manicotti. Wash it down with a little manischewage. I'll be serious, there's a lot of things you can do here. And I am opening myself up to you because I'm writing a new book, and that's Cooking with God in the Wilderness. It's similar to Iron Chef, except the main ingredient? Manna. So if you have any ideas, just send them in to me. And I'll certainly give you credit for cooking in the wilderness with God. Well, at the end of this particular lesson in chapter 17, we find that Israel is facing their first enemy, and that's the Amalekites. But something interesting happens in this battle against the Amalekites. And that is that when Moses' hand with his staff begins to wane and begins to come down, they are experiencing defeat. And so, his friends begin to lift up his arms. And while his arms are being lifted up, in chapter 17 here, when his arms are being lifted up, what happens? Victory. Victory. And that exact verse is chapter 17 and verse 12. "But Moses' hand grew weary, so they took a stone and put it under him, and he sat upon it. And Aaron and Hur held up his hands, one on one side and the other on the other side, so his hands were steady until the going down of the sun." And they ended up winning. That word steady there, I'm reading from the RSV Catholic Edition, is the first time that we see this, really this idea of faith, emuna. His hands were held steady, faithful, long continuance. And that's the key to this battle. Faith and faithfulness. So we come to the end of this lesson. Israel was not freed. We see, they were not freed just from slavery, but they were freed for something else, and that was freedom. And they're not just freed to be away from slavery, but they're freed for freedom. And they're like little children. And God is going to teach them like a patient father that he can be trusted in the wilderness. They know he can redeem. They saw that. But can he sustain? Can he guide? Can he protect them? God is going to show them so they'll be prepared to take and live in the land. Let's pray. Name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, we thank you for freeing us, not just for freedom's sake, but you have freed us for something, to walk in your ordinances, to walk in your word, and to be an example to the nations. Help us, Lord, to check our own life as we look at Israel, as we follow them into the wilderness to Mount Sinai, where they will be there for a year. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Good evening. As mentioned, po sa ating objectives for this session, God continues to reveal himself to us and continues to call on us to stay away from sin. Maaring ito unknowingly or unknowingly. Ating reflection po, we become aware, we become conscious of the different ways God calls us, each of us, so that we avoid committing sins. So ito po 'yung first question. How does God call me to stay away from sin? The second question, how do we manifest that new life in our everyday journey? It's been said that we are called to a new life, to do great things in our journey after we have realized our shortcomings and repented, and we are free from the bondage of sins. Okay, sa ating breakout rooms po, I think we have four groups, tama ba po? So, we will have, yung ating discussion would include yung opening and closing prayers, then short introduction by the facilitator, and the actual sharing of participants on the guide questions. Now, this is a process po na nagawa natin yung ating ano home preparation, and we will just be reading yung ating mga responses. However, kung hindi naman po nagawa, we will be allotting about three minutes for us to write down our responses to this question. We will be having a plenary session after. Yung mga questions that would arise during the discussion, pwede po nating i-bring up don. Now, the facilitator will be the one to give a summary of the responses, to highlight what is common sa discussion and what is unique also in the discussion. So we're opening the breakout rooms now, thank you.
Thank you.
Ay, daw three minute, ano pala?
And then si Ate Lam, gusto niya mananaturo. Thank you saying yung mga sharing.
Five seconds po. Time's up na po. So iu-open ko na po yung breakout room po. Pali, tatlo lang po yung breakout rooms na din. Ay, sa group three po kasi dalawa lang po sila, so ini-spread out ko.
Ay, excuse me, are we still spreading out? Di ba kagusapan natin sa ating ano, we retain the group kahit dalawa lang sila? Tama po ba? Kasi we are finalizing, ano na sina Nanyo magkakasama sa care groups.
Okay po, teka lang po, ayusin ko po.
I think Kuya Nicka, so let it govern yung ating mga groupings.
Kuya Christine, may copy ka na?
Yung bago po, parang wala po.
Kasama nung ating ano, di ba? Yung, I think sa Messenger, yun sa ating whole group.
Ah, okay po, that's it, ganit po. Ah, okay, tama pa nun po, simple rin naman po. Yung group three po, dalawa lang po. Here na po, opening na po. Anyway.
Okay, miss Chee. Anyway.
Ako na. Alright, kanina po, we were reminded by Ate Winnie na ang mga facilitators po, ang magbibigay ng paglalagom doon po sa, narinig natin nakakaiba o something common naman po sa sharing, no? So, Ate Christine, apat na groups tayo, no? Tama?
Tama.
Thank you. Alright, so kami po yung number one. Sa facilitator po, doon sa number one, tatatlo kami, pero hinugol namin yung 20 minutes sa pagninilay dito sa dalawang tanong. At napaka-personal po ng mga bahaginan kanina. So, nakita ng, nakita po yung pagtunggog doon sa paniningil ng Diyos kapag ikaw ay nagkakasala. Gagamitin ko po yung salitang paniningil kasi po ang resulta ay sakit at ina-identify bilang paniningil ng Diyos kapag marami ka na ginagawa sa buhay at napapalayo ka na sa kanya dulot ng alibawa, paghahanap ng trabaho, paghahanap ng buhay dito sa Pilipinas, sa labas ng Pilipinas. At napapalayo, at kasama noon ay yung paggawa ng mga bagay na hindi dapat, na tinatawag nga nating kasalanan. Ito po yung tinawag kanina na paniningil ng Diyos. Pero yung kung paano ang tawag, nakinik sa konsensya na nangungusap sa kanooban. At siguradong-sigurado po yung group one doon sa pakikinig ko kanina. Pakikinig namin sa bawat isa. Ang konsensya ng ito ay ang small voice of God na parang tumawag, tumato sa isip at puso ng bawat isa para bumalik sa Diyos. At nung namang nakabalik sa Diyos, napansin na pinigyan ng Diyos ng panahon. I like what I heard, yung pong sanabe, may binigay na panahon sa akin. Panahon na pagnilayan kung ano yung nangyari sa buhay, panahon na tignan muli, balikan muli kung ano po yung nangyari sa buhay. At nung nakita na ang Diyos pala, itong tumatawag na ito. At ang pagbabalik loob ay napakatindig at nakikinik hindi lamang sa Diyos, kundi sa mga taong pinapadala ng Diyos na nagsasabi din ng mga kahulugan, ng mga tinatawag na payo sa buhay. So yung listening, sa mga taong nasa kaligid. Yung pong dalawang kasama po, tawag ito, common po ito, sumali sa mga organisasyon, sa simbahan, sa mga fellowship, para po, lalong makinig sa Diyos, at makinig sa Diyos sa tinig ng Diyos sa bawat isa, rota nilang pinapakinggan. Yun po yung nagiging sharing namin kanina. Okay, sa group one. We now move to group two.
Okay, sa group two, ako yung magre-report. Common sa amin, yung una, yung recognition na ano yung mga kahinaan na palagi kami nagpo-fall. So, recognition ng sin, no? Na mas madalas, no? Yung frequency of always falling into it. Nandito yung mga bilanggit na mostly ay ang nakiging resulta ay nagpapabagal. Nagpapa, nagkakaroon din ng mga panghihina, no? Pero ang manifestation, kung nahigit pa dito, bago pa lamang darating yung kasalanan or approaching the sin, ay kaparehas doon sa group one, may yung tinig sa loob, no? Tinig yung konsensya. Si, meron isa sa amin na tinawag ni itong kutob, no? Pakaramdam niya na kapag may kakaibang mangyayari, o malalagay siya sa gipit, eto yung ano, kagipitan, eto yung kanyang kutob. So, doon pa lamang ay nakakaiwas na siya doon sa kasalanan. Yung ano, very clear siya na yung very definite siya doon sa mga kasalanan na palagian niya nakikita at na-experience. At ang ginagawa niya to stay away ay pagpapalakas ng sarili, no? Nakadugtong doon sa pangalawang tanong na kung saan ay kapag narerealize niya sa pamagitan ng kanyang community, yung iba naman ay true families, no? Kapag nalalayo, nagkukulang na ng mga oras sa pamilya, nagkukulang na sa oras sa relationship, then or involvement sa simbahan, yung mga commitments and responsibility. Then, ang sinasabi niya ay nababawasan yung tawag niya na doing a great love, no? Yung dapat ay palagian na kapag ikaw ay umibig, ito ay dapat ay buong-buo. Lalo-lalo na kapag ang attitude ay yung pabanjing-banjing, ang may katamaran, complacent, no? Meron din doon sa level ng sensuality na kung saan ay hindi niya karugtong dito yung hindi natatagpuan yung fruits of the Holy Spirit. So wala siyang kapayapaan, wala siyang joy, no, in yung kaligayahan. So eto yung to keep, no? Parang keep ang attitude pa sa so far ng grupo, ay yung keeping pa lang siya, no? Keeping yung becoming faithful by keeping it, by keeping yung mga promise na yan. So yun po yung sa group two.
Thank you, Kuya Nick. Si group three?
Yes po, sa group three po, the first question po, listening on what God is telling to us, yun po yung ano, isa sa mga answers po din. By proper discernment po. So, parang siguro tulad din po ng ano, ng mga sasabi na yung listening yung marirealize mo through your sa mga realization mo lang habang nagdadasal ka or habang mga personal refleksyon, meron mga realization na maririnig mo yung kanyang salita. Then, meron din po na siyempre, pag naglisan po, you are choosing what you are, what you need and not what you want, parang ganun. So, by this po kasi, yung sa akin din po, ang personal kong opinion, tong number one po na to, meron din siyang mga parang stages, merong trying or challenging situation para marerealize mo na you are parang yung tulad ng sabi ni Ate Chee kanina na may mga nararamdaman ka na you feel sick or you're nararamdaman ka na you feel sick or you're exhausted, no, something like that na ah, saka mo marerealize na parang 'yung punishment sa'yo na kaya na, narerealize mo na may kasalanan ka dahil parang 'yun 'yung, parang nagiging signal sa'yo then ah, by the time, magkakaroon ka ng ano, um, ah personal re-reflection, then listen to God's ah, what, ah, on God's, um, message to us. Then, after that, acceptance ng mga kung ano man 'yung, 'yung mga sins na iyong, ano, um, na, na nagawa. Then, 'yung sa second question naman, manifestation, um, in every day's life kasi, merong kahit na anong mangyayari, um, head good or bad there's a significance na binibigay 'yung panginoon, so, so 'yun 'yung, 'yun 'yung isa na ano, um, na, um, siguro dapat, um, ayusin isop din, then aside doon, um, 'yung, 'yung personal relationship with God then at the same time, ah, ah, siguro always feel God's presence and, and, um, giving time to every, ano, every priorities that we have. 'Yung, um, like giving time to God, siguro na, na ah, at the same time sa, sa lahat ng role na meron ka um, give time to, um, proper time, kung ano 'yung mga ah, time na dapat mong libigay, so um, as, kung as follower ni God or as mother, as, um, parent or as, as, um, wife, mga ganun, then and be mindful to become ah, ano siguro, a better person. 'Yun po ah, by being, um, ah, siguro, um, discipling, disciplining yourself by being humble, ah, humbling heart, mga, something like that po, aside from, from ah praying and, um, um, 'yung kontinuance ng involvement sa community po, 'yun po, thank you.
Thank you, Ati Mary Chris. Thank you, Group Three. We now move to Group Four.
Yeah, nasa amin ang Group Four. Yeah, ah, hindi kami natapos pero ang ganda, no? Ah, kudos po doon sa mga ka-group ko, no, ah, bukas ang puso sa kanilang sharing kahit po 'yung ah difficulty ng ah, pag ah, ano ng, pagbibigay ng pagpapatawad, no? Ito po 'yung napokus 'yung aming sharing, no? 'Yung ah, kahirapan sa pagbibigay ng patawad or 'yung ah, meron kang ano, maghiganti kung alibawa, ah, 'yung kahirapan noon, lalo na kung alibawa, ang dubating sa'yo ay dagok, no? Hindi lang sundo kundi dagok. So, ah, ito po doon nakapokus 'yung ah sharing namin kanina. At ah, ah, doon namang po sa ano, ah, 'yung siguro kung ako ang magseshare ay ah, hindi ah, lang sapat 'yung ah, combating sin or 'yung avoiding sin. Ang aking destinasyon ay dapat langit, hindi lamang 'yung ah, daily, ah, ah, avoiding or combating sin. My ah, my supposed to be attitude is to attain heaven. Ngayon, ah, sa tagal ko ng ano, ng ah, sa pagkakasala ay paulit-ulit ang nakatulong sa akin para ano, para ah, hindi ko magawa, siguro ito nga 'yung galaw ng balana spirito ah, o kutob, sabi kanina ni Cor consensya, 'yung relasyon. 'Yung relasyon ko sa Diyos, no? Ay, ayokong ah, madungisan or ma-makaroon ng balaki doon sa aking relasyon sa Diyos. So, 'yun ang ah, naging nakatulong sa akin, so hindi lamang 'yung pag-aboy ng kasalahan kundi 'yung talagang relasyon sa, sa Diyos. Na nakakuha rin ako ng inspirasyon ay sa, kay Saint ah, Teresa of Calcutta na 'yung sa mga makakaharap ko, ay dapat si Cristo ang aking kaharap kung mamimit ko sila, kahit napayo 'yung kaaway ko or kung ano man ba ng ah, nagbibigay ng pasakit sa akin, kailangan narapin ko siya bilang Kristo. So, 'yun ang sikreto ni Madre de Teresa, so ina-dap ko 'yun. So, pagka-nandun ako sa pagkakataon na magkakasala ay laging sumasagi sa isip ko, no? Ang karap ko ay si Jesus. 'Yun lang po, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Kuya Kit. Ah, kung ah, sa summarize po natin ang, 'yung sharing, eto po 'yung mga ah, salita na sa first, sa first question po, 'yung tawag sa atin, no, nagiging bunga kapag nandun tayo sa kasalanan. 'Yung isa, kahirapan, ika lawa, paghihiganti, ika'tlo, paniningil, ika apat, dagok susunat, pagbabagan, paghihinto. Ito po 'yung ah sakit, punishment, eto po 'yung sa una, no, 'yung parang ah, pag tinatawag tayo to stay away from sin, kasi eto 'yung nagiging bunga ng kasalanan. Tapos po, 'yung namang tinatawag na kapag nakinig ka doon sa bulung ng Diyos ang nagiging resulta ay renewal, forgiveness, makikinig ka sa boses ng Diyos. Kapag babad ang buhay sa pakikipag-ugnayan sa Diyos, sabi ni Kuya Kit sa pamagitan ng pananalangin, lalayo ka sa kasalanan. Lalayo, lalumong makikilala ang Diyos na nagmamahal sa atin at hindi tayo tatalikod sa kanya upara lang magkasala. Kapahingahan ang nakikit ako pong salita. Kapahingahan at katatawaran sa Diyos ang ating masasaksihan sa araw-araw. Nating paglalakbay na magbubunga ng lubos at ganap na regalakan tapak sa ugnayan at panghihigabaw ang pagmamahal sa lahat ng bagay, sa lahat ng relasyon at sa lahat ng gagawin sa pang-araw-araw. 'Yun po 'yung sa second manifestation po, kapag tayo ay we are on the right track, journey with this God. Thank you po.
Thank you, Miss Kit. Palapakan natin 'yung ating mga sarili sa sharing. Kuya Renee, kayo na po.
Okay, ah, good evening po sa lahat. Ah, I now would like to ah, share ah, for the point of conclusion, ano po? Ah, I would like to ah, do the conclusion by ah, reading ah, from the Book of Exodus, ah, chapter six, from verse six to verse, ah, verse eight and I would like to ask Bibi to read it for us, no?
Therefore, say to the Israelites, "I am the Lord. I will free you from the burdens of the Egyptians and will deliver you
It's nine o'clock.
from their slav- slavery. I will redeem you by my outstretched arm and with mighty acts of judgment. I will take you as my own people and I will be your God. And you will know that I, the Lord, am your God who has freed you from the burdens of the Egyptians. And I will bring you into the land which I swore to give to Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. I will give it to you as your own possession, I, the Lord."
And 'yun po 'yung ah, para sa akin 'yung parang pinaka-conclusion ah, nung ah, video na pinanood natin kanina kay ah, Kuya Jeff, ano ha? Ah, muli, balik po tayo sa objective natin, ah, that is to understand ah, what it means to be saved from sin and then to be born again as God's child. Ah, 'yung pong Exodus is a grand example of the way that the mother church reads the Old and the New Testaments in the light of each other to gain greater insight into God's plan of salvation. Ah, ito po 'yung tinatawag natin, typology, ano po? Ah, tinitingnan natin ah, what is concealed in the Old and what is revealed in the New Testaments. Dito po pwede natin masabi, ah, dito sa ating session tonight. Ah, Egypt po is analogous to the state of sin and to the separation from God that enslaves all descendants of Adam and Eve, ano po? So, ah, 'yun po ang ah, shall we say ah, makikita natin personification of Egypt na siya po'y analogous pag tayo ay nasa state of sin and we are separated from God. Eh, Kuya Renee, kailan ito? Yan. I would like to make reference naman po ngayon to the Epistle of Saint Paul, to the Galatians, chapter five and then verse ah, sixteen, it reads, and I quote, "I say then, live by the Spirit and you will certainly not gratify the desire of the flesh." 'Yun po 'yung una question natin kanina, papaano tayong tinatawag ng Diyos na lumayo sa kasalanan? Eh, ano ba 'yung mga kasalanan, alright? Ah, verse seventeen po, "For the flesh has desires against the Spirit." Yan, 'yung pong separation from God, ano po? "And the Spirit against the flesh. These are opposed to each other so that you may not do what you want." Yan, ito po tayo tinatawag ng, ni God, to stay away from sin. Now, ah, listen to this, "But if you are guided by the Spirit, you are not under the law. Now, the works of the flesh are obvious." Yan, eh, Kuya Renee, ano 'yung mga kasalanan na pinag-uusapan natin? Example, immorality, impurity, licentiousness, idolatry, sorcery, hatreds. Yan, 'yung mga revenge-revenge yan, rivalry, jealousy, outbursts of fury, acts of selfishness dissensions, factions, occasions of envy, drinking bouts, orgies, and the like. "I warn you, as I warned you before, that those who do such things will not inherit the kingdom of God." Yan, ah, 'yan po tayo tinatawag ng Diyos na away from sin, ano ha? Ah, kaya po when ah, we were given the Ten Commandments and when Jesus was asked which was the greatest, sinimply five pa ni Jesus, no, dinalawa lang niya. That is the love of God and then the love of mayors, okay? So, ngayon, ating hindi po matuto nga yan, that the Red Sea dramatizes the drowning of the old master. What is the old master that is seen? In the waves and the birth to a new life as a child of God on the other side. Yan, so papaano namang po tayo magma-manifest ngayon? Na tayo dumaan na nga sa Red Sea, no? At tayo ngayon ay ah, we are living a new life or a new life in the Spirit. So, tutulog po 'yung sa Galatians five, ah, this time po, ah, I will read verse twenty-two. Sabi po, "In contrast, the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, generosity, faithfulness, gentleness, self-control. Against such, there is no law." Ah, itong verse twenty-four, pakinggan natin mabuti, sabi the verse twenty-four. "Now, those who belong to Christ Jesus have crucified their flesh with its passions and desires. If we live in the Spirit, let us follow the Spirit." Yan po, no? Again, nakalagay doon. Ah, "Those who belong to Christ Jesus have crucified their flesh with its passions and desires." Yan, 'yung po 'yung tinatawag na, "If we are good disciples of Jesus we should be willing to take up our cross daily and then follow Jesus." 'Yung po, 'yung cross na tinutukoy, ano po? Ah, being crucified to Jesus, meaning to shy away from the law of the flesh and rather ah, to follow the law of the Spirit, ano po? Which is the manifestation that indeed we are born again in this new life, okay? So, bottom line po, ah, again to conclude, ah, it is quite clear and quite simple to understand ah, God is revealing Himself to us, alright? And what He wants us to have is true happiness. That is why He gave us the commandments. The commandments are not rules to restrict us, but rather the commandments were given actually to make us free. Free to receive the happiness that He wants for us. Now, two things, when we make choices in our decisions, if we make the right choices that is we heed to His call, then we get the rewards. And then po, that is where we manifest the life in the Spirit. On the other hand, if we make the wrong choices, then we suffer the consequences. Kanina po ang ginamit na katagya, paniningil ng Diyos. Ah, palagay ko, hindi naniningil ng Diyos. Ang tinatawag natin paniningil ng Diyos are the consequences that we suffer when we make wrong choices in our decisions. Eh, Kuya Renee, how do we ah, what do we do for us to be able to make the right choices? Ah, again, ah, ah, I will reiterate, 'yung pong ano ba talaga ang katangian ng isang disipulo ni Kristo? Unang-una, siya po ay naranalangin prayer, ano po? Nasa gano'n, kagaya ni Moses, mapakinggan niya kung ano sinasabi ng Diyos. Ang prayer po, hindi 'yun tayo lang nagsasalita, tapos ang Diyos nakikinig, ano po? Ang panalangin, mas lamang sana ang Diyos ang nagsasalita at tayo ay nakikinig. Pangal wala po doon, pangalawa po doon 'yung pag-aaral. Ito pong ginagawa natin ngayon, prebiernes, inaaral natin ang Bibliya. Ano po, sana po higit lang sa kaalaman ang ating ah, gusto mahita kundi po 'yung kalaliman sa pagtaha sa ating mga puso, kung ano po ang tinuturo ng Diyos sa atin. Pangatlo po, okay, will be 'yung worship natin, no? Meaning together sa community, we worship together, which also brings up to the point 'yung pang-apat na hinakailangan po na our faith is only alive when we put it into work, 'yun po 'yung ating service. So, apat po, spiritual exercises natin, panalangin, pag-aaral, ah, pagsamba, at pang-apat po, pagsilbi. Ano po? Ah, and in such manner, ah, then we just like the, the Israelites will eventually ah, carry on and move on to our journey to the promised land. Sabi nga ni Kuya Kit kanina, heaven, alright? 'Yun ang destination na, ka-kanyang inahangad. Ah, of course, ah, there's another beautiful saying, ano po? Ah, heaven is not only the point of destination. In fact, heaven can even start now as we are going on our journey. Ah, we don't have to wait to die in order to experience heaven. We can experience heaven even when we are alive. How? By shying away from sin, ah, following and being obedient and faithful to God. And then two, by living a born-again life, ano po? Meaning therefore making manifest the fruit of the Spirit in our daily lives. And that can be, shall we say, ah, verified, alright? When you hear some people already saying na, wow, how I wish I am living the life that you are now living. Okay po, so ah, 'yun po 'yung aking conclusion for tonight. Ah, I hope we were not drowned by the video of ah, Kuya Jeff. But rather simply put, ah, God is calling on us, revealing Himself to us and wanting us to enjoy our, His hap, His happiness with us by bearing away from sin and that is why He is drawing out, drawing us out from slavery and then He's leading us into freedom and that is freedom to true happiness with love, with by grace, and for His glory. And this is our prayer, in Jesus' name we say, amen and amen.
Amen. Amen.
Thank you for listening, po.
Thank you too.
Yeah, raise the roof natin si Kuya Renee, raise the roof. Born again. Hindi, nasabayan ko lang kayo, ating sister.
And, and Nick.
Ano, ano dapat, ah, sister, may sasabing ka.
Ah, I was listening to Kuya Renee and 'yung kasi, you know, when we use the word born again of course, it's in the Bible of course, and that's where people take it literally when you say born again, born again sila, so I was, for me, I So I was, for me, I I get conscious when I get to mean that. I say transformed life. Trans- a life transformed by the love of God. Ganon, yung ginagamit. Kasi when you say born again, ay ginagamit ni sister yung born. So I I was oh I was helping myself to say every time when I say that is we manifest the goodness of God in our lives through a life transformed by the love of God. Yeah. I don't know.
Thank you, Bisya.
Yeah, I would like, I would like to apologize kasi I talk too much and si si Brother Kit would not. Thank you for sharing your faith experience. Hindi na niya natapos 'yung aming sa aming kasi I took all the time. Sorry po.
Lagot ka, sister.
Oo nga eh.
Thank you po sa pagbubukas ng puso. Auntie Baby, are you raising your hand Auntie Baby? Si Auntie Sherill, may sasabing po kayo? Wala? Okay. Parang may nagtaas.
Wala po.
Alright. So sister, instead of raise the roof, ano naman ang gagawin natin?
We express or we lift up to God.
Yes, oh, lift the heart, lift the heart. Sige po. So uh meron na tayong mga permanent groupings ngayon. So the facilitators can uh consistently follow up 'yung kanila mga members during the week. And uh some of the questions or some may have other questions, um some clarifications during this uh session. Uh or pag- pag tanggap ninyo ng mga materials, 'yung responses and even reviewing 'yung video of uh Jeff Klavins, uh there may be other clarifications. You may use, 'yung chance na 'yan, the opportunity of meeting with your facilitators to discuss, 'yung mga hindi na ilabas na mga tanong within this uh period pwede n'yong gawin doon sa gagawin ng mga facilitators. That's number one. Number two, uh malapit na 'yung ano no? Malapit uh alam niyo nangyayari ngayon sa paligid na merong hiringan 'yung mga malalaking bansa. So uh let's join in prayers doon sa mga uh nangyayari ngayon uh para ma-achieve natin. And then we can also engage our community to include these uh uh mga events na nakakatakot minsan na lagyan ng pagpapa- pa- kapayapa. And then yung uh pangatlo, na- namatay 'yung kapatid ni Kuya John V. Okay, so saman natin ang pangalan ni Alvin. Pakisama po sa panalangin lang. Si Auntie Rose po ay apat daw po 'yung iniandan niya. Meeting tomorrow, hindi hindi siya maka-attend ngayon. So paumanhin daw po. Alright, uh meron pa? Sa core group, meron ba akong nakalimutan? Okay, sige po. Let's go now to the closing prayer and the blessing.
Alright, again in the spirit of thanksgiving and prayer. Alright, we now say, may the Lord bless us and keep us. May the Lord make His face to shine upon us and be gracious to us. And may the Lord lift up His countenance upon us and give us peace. And may the blessings of Almighty God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit be upon us all now and for always. Amen.
Amen. Sige po. Zoomi tayo. Zoomi, Auntie Carmen.
Thank you, thank you.
Auntie Christine pa zoomi.
Auntie Nam kaya po mag-open po ng ano, ayun.
Yan no?
In three, two, one, smile everyone. Okay na po. Kuya, di natatotoo. Natatotoo ako sa picture ni Kuya Nicole. Gulat na gulat.
Sige, thank you po.
Thank you.
Core group, stay for a while. Core group, core group.
Thank you.
Yan, thank you. Yan. So good evening sa lahat. Uh komusta po? Komusta 'yung nangyari? Uh approve ba siya o ganon? Auntie Dali, komusta kayo?
Di medyo nalito lang ako kanina sa ano, sa ano natin, sa groupings.
Abo?
Kasi yung, yung una, actually meron na nga akong notes. Tapos, may pinadala uli 'yung maliit na ano na kami na naman ni Kuya John V nandoon. So akaya nag- nag-open 'yung prayer nguna ako. Pero yung po lang, ang susundin, yung sa grouping namin ni ano, Latit Sheet at saka ni.
Opo, uh pinadala ko po yun Auntie Dali.
Oo, so yun na yun. Yun na yun.
So kayo po ni Auntie Sheet ang magkasama sa group one. Si Kuya John V at saka ako, kami magkasama sa group two.
Okay.
Si Auntie Mary Chris at saka si Auntie Winnie magkasama sa group three. Nag-beg opo si Auntie Lolit na magpa-facilitator muna. And then si Kuya Kit at saka si Auntie Carmen naman sa group four.
Mukhang may problema kanina si Auntie Carmen di nakapasok sa group.
Oo, naka-cellphone lang daw kasi siya eh.
Okay.
At tinanggal niya kasi 'yung background niya na dagat sa likod niya nawala.
Hindi, lagi siyang, naka-data lang ata siya, laging na nadrop. Kasi po siya ina- eh oo.
Oo, may malaki 'yung signal kapag may dagat sa likod eh.
Bumabagyo pa yata.
Oo, ano lang na pagkaka- nagkataon lang diba Auntie Carmen?
Opo.
Sige po. Anything else po sa Auntie, sa Auntie Dali, okay na po kayo? So you are in group one, may Latit Sheet? Mag-usap na lang po kayo doon sa mga follow-up sa niya sa mga group.
Auntie Dali, next week ikaw niya ng facilitator.
Auntie, auntie, ito nga magbe-beg opo ako kasi sa twenty-three to twenty-six wala kami dito. Maga-out of the county kami ng mga.
Alaga, wow. But Kuya.
Di ba?
Sana all.
Seventy-five na ako kaya eh inano ako ng anak ko. Mommy, ano gusto mo?
Ah, treat niya.
Magka- ou- out of the county. Sagto out of the county nila.
Wow.
Uh but anyway, attend din naman ako nung sa Monday at saka pag hindi ano maaga kami umuwi sa hotel, magtroy ako maki-join din doon sa ano. Pero magtroy lang ako kasi pag nasa ibang lugar ka kasi parang mahirap din po. Yun lang po.
Okay po, thank you Auntie Dali. Um mukhang mahangin dyan sa inyong bahay, Auntie.
Ako to po electric fan.
Ano? So anything else? So okay tayo lahat for tonight. Uh maganda no? Magaganda 'yung mga sharing at saka 'yung uh conclusion na ginawa kanina ni Kuya Renee. Thank you po, Kuya. At saka syempre 'yung sama rin ni Auntie Sheet. Okay, so kung wala na, so see you sa Monday for our planning. For, ano, actually nagsabi na si Kuya Renee ng mga parang uh pag-aaralan na eh, ano, 'yung mga batas.
Batas.
Sa part two na po ng Exodus na yan. Okay, sige. And then the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. All glory to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit as it was in the beginning. Forever shall be. Amen. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you po. Good night.
Say, anyong.
Good night. Good night.
Night po.
Hi, Auntie Christine, thank you.
Isto ako kanina. So yun na po, medyo ano 'yung week ko talaga ngayon.
Oh.
Medyo uh sabihin nating medyo nag- nagkanan ako ng moment of depression this week po.
Ay, ganda nga ng post mo kanina sa Facebook sa, o sabi mo.
Teenity lang po ako pero medyo.
Oo.
Inside.
Nagtambah, nagtambay-tambay ka pa eh, di ba? Oo, ganda-ganda nga eh. Okay, thank you po sa lahat.
Okay po.
Anyong.
Night po, good night.
Hi, happy weekend.
Auntie Winnie.